Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's 10:02. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We have a special work session today for the purpose of learning a presentation regarding and discussion about impact fee land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and next steps. The purpose of this hour-long session this morning is to better prepare council for the work session tomorrow evening, which is the first of what will be a couple of work sessions related to impact fees. That is scheduled for these very chambers tomorrow night at 5:00. We have a hard stop at 11:00 today because of our COVID-19 press conference at 11:30. So with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate you joining us this morning. I know we were here just not so horribly long ago, but what we'd like to do is kind of refresh everybody's memory, bring us all back online with what the process is as it relates to studying and potentially adopting your impact fees. Recall that this process is actually included in Plan Lubbock 2040, or your comprehensive plan. During that plan, it was directly stated to the council to consider implementing the impact fees for the roadways and to study such for water and wastewater. So today, Jessica, are you starting first, or do you want me to call Mike?
Mr. Keenan.
Mr. Keenan, our city engineer, will come up. Council, I believe you each have the presentation for today before you, and Mike will get us started. Mike?
Thanks, Jared. So as Mr. Atkinson said, we're going to do the work session. Just to clarify, tomorrow night will be a public hearing, not simply a work session, but a public hearing.
I'm sorry, it's a public hearing.
I know you've had a lot of meetings lately, so just wanted to do a quick overview for myself, and then I'm going to turn it over to the consultant to do the remainder of the presentation. This is an infographic that we've got on the city website that just kind of outlines what impact fees are. And so backing up, this is a new slide. A lot of the slides you're going to see are going to look similar to what we presented to y'all back in February at a work session. They're obviously being updated with new information, revised information. And going back and understanding in the comprehensive plan, we looked at multiple different funding sources and mechanisms at that time, and impact fees were ones that rose to the top. And as Mr. Atkinson stated, that was what was recommended in the comprehensive plan. So this committee is only looking at the impact fee portion and studying the technical pieces of that and making recommendations to this body. As you look at impact fees and what they are, they're a one-time fee, and Mr. Whitaker with Kimley Horn is going to get into more details of this, but just giving that broad overview, a one-time fee for new construction, new development, that helps offset the cost that the city pays for infrastructure to support growth. And so understanding that is the impact fee would pay a portion of the infrastructure cost for the proportional impact of that new development to the overall system. So not all of the cost, but a small portion of that. The ratepayers and taxpayers continue to pay the bulk of the cost, but it would be an additional set of revenue for the city that we don't currently have, another tool in the toolbox that's not available to us today. As we look through this to understand the process before us in the public hearing tomorrow night, it's not the full study, it's just the first piece of the study. And so it's the land use assumptions and the capacity improvement plan. That's the only piece that's for the public hearing tomorrow night, not the maximum fee, not the specific cost of projects, but the list of projects and those assumptions. And so as a broad brush overview, what happens is we start somewhere. We start with a growth assumption, and what is population going to grow to be in the next 10 years? And so the comprehensive plan recommended a 2.5% growth rate. The committee, the CAC committee, recommended also adopting that 2.5%. That becomes your ultimate decision on what's in the plan. That is what is there. And so that 2.5% produces a population increase in the next 10 years of about 77,000 people. And so you've got that additional people. Now we distributed those throughout the city based on the land use map, based on the current city limits, no annexation involved. And so we placed those 77,000 people around the city limits. Where do they go, based on, again, where we've seen building permits, where we've seen trends, where we've seen plans for new things, where we want to see development occur? But they've got, those 77,000 people have to fit somewhere, and so that gets distributed through the different areas of town. Once you do that, then we develop the capital project list of now what kind of infrastructure do we need to support that growth? Water, sewer, or roadways are what we're looking at here. And so understanding these lists of projects come from that growth assumption of 2.5%, where that distribution of people are, and then what kind of projects are needed to handle that volume of traffic or water and sewer infrastructure to support that increased growth. So that's the basis of what the public hearing is for tomorrow night, not a maximum fee, not specific cost details of those. That's the next step. That's the next piece. And I know a lot of the concerns and questions have been on those details. We're not trying to hide any of that. We're just getting to that after we get to this point. The committee has moved forward with the assumption that we will go forward after tomorrow night. That entirely rests with this body of whether we do that or not. But understanding is that a lot of the questions that have come up is not related to this piece, but to the next piece when we start doing policies, what is the maximum fee? This body has seen an estimated maximum fee back in February that kind of got the community engaged by seeing those numbers. That was a look ahead of what's coming, and so we'll see more of that today as we refine that even more. But those are still based on waiting for what happens tomorrow night and the recommendations we get and the recommendations that this body does. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Whitaker with Kimley Horn to go through this process a little further and diving down a little deeper into the... Jeff?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here. I think after doing two or three months of online meetings, it's really nice to actually be in first person and see your face, and it's just a different feeling actually being in person. So it was actually, it's my first in-person meeting in a while, so I'm very excited. So I want to go over where we've been, why impact fees, a little bit of the basics, get into the components, the details that Mike just described, talk about the comparisons, and then the upcoming decisions that will have to be made. So one of the items from where we've been in prior meetings is we have a capital improvements advisory committee known as the CAC. They've been working diligently, and I commend them. They've actually been to all the meetings you've seen in front of you, but they've been working since really July of almost a year, July of 2019, kicking off and going through everything you see in front of you. As you see the meetings listed in front of you, the ones in black are really the meetings that we've had that were really focused on what you're seeing to happen tomorrow night. The meetings in red, as Mike mentioned, we kind of moved ahead just to have to start the discussion, see where we're going. The meetings in red that we've had recently are really about the future steps, but we wanted to have those discussions early to see kind of where we're heading. So several of those meetings have been posted online, so the video is available for people to watch if they choose to. As far as council, we've met with you a few times. Most recently that I met with you was in February 11th. We gave you a similar presentation, and what I plan to highlight here is some of those slides, but more importantly, what's changed since February 11th, too, so you can kind of see the impact that the advisory committee and some of the public comments we've had so far to date has had on the presentation. This is just a reminder, May 28th, the real focus tomorrow night is the public hearing on the service areas, land use assumptions, and capacity projects. That's really the focus tomorrow night, does not improve the implementation of impact fee, and then also any results that I'm showing you today, when I'll get to that part, any comments I've received from you tomorrow night could affect the results I show, because if we decide to move a project, change some growth projections, everything that I show you right now is preliminary. So why impact fees? Mike did a good job of summarizing what came out of the comprehensive plan Lubbock 2040. There's really two different needs for transportation funding. There's really existing needs and future needs. A lot of times existing needs, you hear about operations and maintenance. That's kind of where we're standing today in this area of Lubbock, and you'll see on some of the slides, is most of your needs are like on the operation and maintenance sides. When you get towards the outer peripheral of Lubbock, a lot of them are building new roads, capacity. Impact fees are really just targeting capacity, and really when your toolbox, as Mike mentioned, is to have growth, pay for growth, we were looking for a toolbox, and there's multiple toolboxes. Impact fee is one of those tools, potentially growth, pay for growth. Really what it does, it's accountable because state law tells us how to do it and outlines a specific process. So some of the reasons we do things is because we're following state law in that aspect. It's consistent with your goals in the comprehensive plan. The idea is that it should be equitable, in that meaning if a developer was to develop, you know, a restaurant in one part of the service area and another part of the service area, they would pay the same fee. Everyone's treated the same, equitable, by meaning fair. It's predictable. When we're done, if council decides to move forward and adopt the fee, you'll be able to pull up a spreadsheet online and figure out what your actual fee is, and it's proportional. It's directly related to the traffic. A single-family home pays a different dollar amount than a restaurant, because a restaurant generates more traffic for transportation. Same thing with water. If you pull a bigger water meter, you pay a larger fee than if you pull a smaller water meter. So that's the kind of why impact fee sides. So a little bit about the current process. The developers currently do pay and construct their interior infrastructure. So in a subdivision, they build the residential streets, they put in the water and wastewater pipelines, they do put the curb and gutter for arterial streets. So that's how they contribute to the curb and gutter. They do establish a curb and gutter line for arterial streets. The city currently pays for builds the arterial streets. The city typically provides water and sewer mains for developments to use. The developers will pay their portion through an assessment for the water and sewer lines that we're looking at as part of this process. If impact fees would move forward, how would that change? City currently provides water and wastewater treatment for the entire city, and one of the reasons it got brought up in Lubbock 2040 is the current practices have not allowed the city to keep up with development growth. They're kind of paying catch-up to the development. Where the development's going, they have to go in and build the streets afterwards, trying to play a little catch-up mode. So why is Lubbock pursuing impact fees? Roadways are funded through the general fund. It's properties and sales tax. That's really the only source of funding for roadways right now. They're trying to diversify the toolbox, and really with that, it's hard to keep up without adding something else to that toolbox. Water and sewer fees are funded through existing user fees, and so existing users are paying for the growth components as well. So trying to supplement the existing users to pay for future users. And as part of the vetting process of Lubbock 2040, this was evaluated, and impact fees was the best option to move forward with, as Mike mentioned. There was a recommendation for roadway and the consideration for studying water and wastewater. So a little bit about the basics, just to get everyone on the same page. This is a one-time fee for new development, so this is for new growth, new trips, new water demand. It's a mechanism to recover infrastructure costs to serve new development, roughly proportional with mathematical exactitude. It's the only legal way in Texas to collect a fee that's flexible for the city to use it in the best interest for the development community. By flexibility, they can spend it on the projects that are listed in the plan. Right now, Texas allows for water, wastewater, roadway, and drainage. We're not studying drainage at this time, but those are the four things by state statute that we're allowed to look at. Other states have many other avenues of impact fees, but right now, we're just focused on water, wastewater, and roadway. So what's payable? The simple way of everything that's payable is if you're building a project that's related to capacity, anything that's to deliver that project is impact fee eligible. Construction of the capital projects, survey engineering, debt service, land acquisition costs, you'll see one of the recommendations from the advisory committee about land acquisition costs in a little bit. Components that cannot be paid through the program, is anything that's not identified on the plan, anything to do with existing demand deficiencies. We can't fix existing issues. We can only provide for new growth. So service areas, we spent two meetings with the CAC on service areas before they got comfortable going through multiple options. What's really important about the service areas, this really concept pertains to roadway, is state law defines the service areas as six mile, six mile, that's what it says. We interpret that as a six-mile trip length, so we divide up the areas of Lubbock to really be about approximately six miles in diameter, and these were the areas that the CAC and we worked towards to get, and there's eight total service areas throughout Lubbock, kind of try to make major streets kind of the dividing line. These are similar to what you saw. These haven't changed since February. These are the same service areas you saw in February. For water and wastewater, it's a little bit simpler. It's one system. Roadway is kind of an open system, so it's kind of goes everywhere. Water and wastewater, it's considered one system. You operate your water and wastewater kind of as one system, or roadway, you may operate a project by project. So for water and wastewater, it's pretty common. Most cities across Texas has one service area for water and wastewater, and we recommend that for Lubbock as well. The land use assumptions, this is a pretty important part of the aspect established of the infrastructure demands using the master plan. What we were looking at the comprehensive plan, the future growth that was projected in the comprehensive plan, and wanted to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And this slide really shows that. What we saw over the last 10 years was approximately 2% growth. With the comprehensive plan and what the growth projection that gets recommended, you'll see in the next slide, it's 2.5%. So you'll see kind of the growth trend that's happened since 1990 and kind of where we're projecting through 2040. That's consistent with the recommendation in the comp plan. These were the tables we're looking at, and if you look at the chart on the right, you'll see how in high levels, how the growth was divided around the city of Lubbock. And as you can see, most of the growth is outside the loop, and this is the kind of the darker, the red, the more growth there was, and we had to allocate that 2.5% across the city so that roughly 77,000 individuals allocated, as you see across the city. And a lot of times, we think of this as service areas. So if you want to think of it in the roadway service areas, how we're allocating across the city, this gets a little bit more refined. This is the population growth across the city. One thing to do is we're all looking in the crystal ball where it would go. It's important to remember that impact fees are growth-dependent, so if the growth does not occur as we plan, the project probably won't get built, but also the developer probably won't pay the fee. So if the growth isn't happening, the fee's not paid. If the growth is happening, the fee is paid. But based on our guidance, this is where we allocated the roughly 76,843 people across the city, and it kind of makes sense if you think about the growth. Service area F had the largest growth that we saw in the area, as well as service area B had significant growth that we were seeing in the next 10 years. The capacity plans is another important piece that you're looking at tomorrow night. It's based on your adopted master plans. So the roadway is based on your adopted thoroughfare plan, the water is based on your adopted water master plan and wastewater master plan. So really what we're trying to understand is what the next 10 years are, and you've done a lot of master planning with the comp plan, as well as with the water and wastewater master planning, to try to understand those needs. Really what we're trying to calculate at the end of the day is every project or every area has three really cost components, and this graphic spoke to a few of the folks I had mentioned, too, so I wanted to show it to you, is each of those cost components, there is an existing demand. So if there's a roadway out there today, there's traffic on the roadway today, there's an existing demand out there. We shouldn't charge for that existing demand. There's a future 10-year demand that's going to be needed, so we can charge for that. That's the purpose of the impact fees, to look at the next 10 years. But then a lot of times for major infrastructure projects, we're not building like an elevated storage tank for the next 10 years. We're building it for the next 20 years, so a portion of that cost would be on the 10-year window. So if you think about each bucket, there's an existing cost, there's a 10-year cost, and there's a beyond 10-year cost. So right now, we're kind of looking at the total cost. So when you see some of these numbers, we're looking at the total cost. The next part is we're breaking those costs down to what buckets they need to be in. So we've developed the land use and population projections, as we just mentioned, with the 2.5%, and we're developing the 10-year capacity plans. What we're working on right now with the advisory committee is we're going through removing the costs associated with existing demand and telling them how that comes out. You'll see that today, but we're working through that with them and the credit calculation. Both the items are red that you see is not what we're talking about for the public hearing, just the items in green, those check marks, the 10-year capacity plans and the land use and population projections. So just to dive into a little bit of the details, I wanted to show two service areas for roadway. So roadway is a little bit different than water and wastewater. So the committee had two different approaches. We discussed with them, and we worked up quite a bit of time discussing this approach. One is that we looked at project specifics, the other one was we looked at what we called the universal projects, and we wanted to take the universal projects and narrow that down to what the cost would be in 10 years. And the reason we wanted to do that is to allow flexibility where the city could spend the money. If we decided to pick Quaker as the road and you really needed the money on university, that kind of hamstrides us for the next 10 years. But if we lumped the universal projects together and figured out what portion, what percentage of those projects, it kind of gave flexibility to the city. So I'm going to walk you through that. We included new arterials, widening arterials, some completed arterials with excess capacity, so recently-built roads that had been built in anticipation of growth, and some intersection improvements. When we looked at service area A, if you see the total cost of the capacity plan is $151.1 million. So to build out your entire network for that area, towns, is going to eventually cost $151 million and $20,000 without debt. But if you remember that formula I just looked at, there's a breakdown for existing 10-year cost and beyond 10-year cost. So in that area, we saw $18.3 million of existing needs, so we can't charge that for impact fees. So that 18.3 million is taken out. We also saw 95 million beyond the 10 years. This part of service area A, we don't anticipate building out in the next 10 years, so 95 million is beyond that 10-year window. So if you look at service area A, the number that's really important, that's not what we're talking about tomorrow night, but the number that's ultimately going to be really important is at 37.8 million. So in the next 10 years in service area A, we recommend allocating 37.8 million for growth in service area A. So that's going to be a really important number from this one. Similarly, just to show you another one, the reason I wanted to show you this one is service area A does not have any existing projects in it. Service area E has some existing projects. When you see the projects that are in green, if you're familiar with the area, those are projects that had been built recently that we're trying to recover some funds on. So if you look at this, and it's the same format as before, these are the two high-growth areas in towns with lots of needs. So this one shows $129.5 million for total needs through build-out. But we break that down into three categories again. $17.2 million needs for existing demands, $38.7 million need for the 10-year, that 38.7 million being the important number, and then $73.6 million beyond the 10-year needs. So that window's going to continuously move. So in five years, if you were to update this, those numbers will change, so that number continuously moves. The most important number here is it just so happens to be about the same number, it's at 38.7 million. And one of the things I mentioned earlier, I was going to touch on, is one of the decisions of the advisory committee was to remove right-of-way from the cost of the projects, so that would be one of the elements that if right-of-way was dedicated, it wouldn't be an offset, too. So that was one of the decisions that they recommended is right-of-way, because it's currently been dedicated and given throughout the process of that. I just wanted to note, this is right-of-way was removed. That's one of the items that hadn't happened, I don't think, before the February 11th meeting. That was a result of some of the feedback we got back. So that's one of the changes that has happened, that we removed right-of-way from the cost. So that's why when you see the numbers, you'll see they're a little bit lower than what we showed you probably in February 11th, is because the right-of-way has been removed. So breaking down each service area, this is kind of how you break down each service area by those three chunks. On the left side of this chart, where you see the line drawn to the left, it says included in the land use assumption and the capacity report. What you see in the report that's being presented for you tomorrow night, or the public hearing for tomorrow night, is really the demand, the growth, so the total vehicle demands of new growth, that's projecting that population and how much demand on the traffic they're going to have, and then the total cost. The breakdown to the right is the full report that you're going to see in, you know, in the second public hearing if we move towards that direction. And just an important thing to remember, as we get that, I said that roughly $38 million number in service area A was really important. That is really important, but one thing that we have to remember, state law requires us to cut that number in half. There's a requirement in state law that says the recoverable cost has to be cut in half. It's just one of those state law requirements. What that cut in half is for is to recognize that future growth comes in and they pay taxes, so we're not double-dipping, if you will. So state law allows you to just cut it in half, and that represents the double dip, if you will.
Is that in half or at least in half?
At least in half. Like you have to cut it at least in half. You could do a detailed credit calculation to determine what it really is, but the direction we went was to cut it at least in half at this point. So water and wastewater are slightly different. We went with that universal project approach that we mentioned before. For water and wastewater, we went with a project-specific approach. Instead of looking at the whole system and breaking it down, every project we're breaking down, and it's based on the master plan. So we looked at the master plan that's been put together for water and wastewater, and we identified the 10-year projects. So in the next 10 years, the total cost, this is the total cost, is $126.9, roughly $127 million. And these are the projects that have been identified by the master plan to be built in the next 10 years. One thing to note, much like the right-of-way was removed for roadway, the existing projects based on the recommendations of the CIC have been removed. If you recall, when we presented in November, February 11th, there were some questions about a few of the existing projects. Some of the existing projects are big-ticket items, and there were some questions from council. The advisory committee heard those questions and heard the feedback from the public that's been talking to them. They made the decision to remove the existing projects on water and wastewater. On roadway, the existing projects are still in, but on water and wastewater, the existing projects were removed. So what's before you tomorrow night shows the existing projects being removed. Very similar for the water capacity plan, very similar, $97.7 million. This is based on the water master plan for the next 10 years. This aligns with those. Very similar projects, ranging from some elevated storage tanks to water lines.
How did you define existing project?
So existing projects are projects that are built.
So something that's under construction, how does that?
On the water and wastewater, I believe under construction are still in there, are under design.
The elevated tanks, those are under design construction, so those are still counted as proposed. They're not in service yet.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you. So on the elevated tanks, those are, yeah, thank you for coming up.
Sorry.
You said they're proposed.
Right, because they're not in service yet.
Planned, engineered?
That's correct.
But it's not considered, it is considered a current project or not?
We're calling it a proposed project because it's not in service. It's not built, and it's not functioning just yet. That's why we've included them as a proposed project still.
However, we have, it's in the rate model, correct?
I do believe so.
Everything's in the rate model. I just want to verify that.
I was going to say, and the rate model is going to conclude, all the projects for the next five years are figured into the rate model.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's how we do, and I don't know if we want to add to that, but that's how the rate model is looked at. All the projects that we're looking to do figures into the rate model so that we do the flattening of the rates instead of having the peaks and valleys.
Right, but it's in the five-year rate model?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So similar to roadway, we break down water and wastewater. We do this by project, so in the ultimate report, and we shared this in the last CIC meeting, so people have seen, we break down each project to what's existing versus in the next 10 years versus beyond the 10 years. So very similar, if you look at wastewater citywide, we're looking at 31 million for the next 10 years, attributable to growth, and water, 33 million. And this would be very similar to roadway, we'd be cutting at least by half by state law. So what's included in the report tomorrow night is just the total cost. So you'll see the 126 million and then the 97.7 million. We're working on finalizing the numbers for the, what's to the right that's included in the final report.
So the demand due to growth, then, would just be a math equation?
Yeah, we break down each project based on the water and wastewater model, how much of that growth is used in each project.
Like if you take the water, the 97, $98 million over the 10 years, how do you get to 17.56 being based upon growth?
So the 17.56, that is looking at taking the population projection and multiplying it by a per capita number. So we're looking at how much water we're anticipating new customers to be using, and so that 77,000 people times the per capita yields a average day growth of about 17.5 million gallons per day to the distribution system. Same thing on the wastewater side. The 7.62 million is the anticipated sewer, the increase in sewer flow over the 10-year time period.
Thank you.
So for water, based on those demand projections, about a third of the CIP you see in front of you for 10 years, that 33 million out of the 97 million is what we're anticipating to be the growth demands of that CIP that you see before you have the capacity plans. The formula, this, so I'll take a stop right there because we're kind of sliding into some of the stuff that's not on the public hearing for tomorrow, so I want to make sure I've answered some of your questions on the capacity plans, which y'all have asked some good ones, and the land use assumptions. Some of the other stuff is the calculations, just because you're getting a lot of questions about the calculations as well. I want to make sure you see that in this work session, but I'm going to take a break I want to make sure you see that in this work session, but I'm gonna take a break here to see if there are any other questions on specifically the service areas, the growth projections, or the capacity plans that you haven't already asked.
Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, if you, just, I had a clarification question from my own knowledge. So on slide, yeah, that's slide twenty-four. Demand due to growth for water, are we using the local per capita water use number?
So the, the per capita is consistent with your strategic water supply plan and what's in your water distribution master plan?
Okay, thank you.
And state law actually requires to look back at ten years of usage.
That's correct.
So we actually have to look back at ten-year historic usage on water, um, to calculate that, the number.
Ms. Joy?
You, um, at your first meeting on service areas, you came in and recommended two. And then after that meeting, you came back with four, and we're now at eight. Walk me through that process of how you got from two service areas to eight.
Um, I don't recall the two service areas, we, we had a, the, we had one of seven service area options, eight and nine.
Well, the, the report says that you presented the C I C with two initial.
Oh, there were two initial options.
Not, not two.
Okay, okay, that's, it, this says two initial service area.
Okay, that's a good.
Okay.
There, we had two service area options, we actually had three to begin with, we really narrowed it down to two service area options, and we landed on the final one.
And so, uh, how did we end up with eight service areas? Give me the background on that.
Yeah, we, we, um, presented three options originally to them, and then they really got down to two, seven, eight, nine service areas. And it was really looking at how the projects fell out, and how the growth was falling out, and what the boundaries were, and to be in compliance with state law. So, we thought that the, the, uh, the seven service areas were getting too big, and so we didn't have room to, like, if you grew to the southwest and happened to annex anything, you couldn't grow those service areas, I mean, in compliance with state law. Eight allowed us some flexibility to grow, and maybe annex some areas in the service areas. So eight allowed a little flexibility, we thought nine was a little too small. Um, we wanted, the ideal is to get as big a service areas as possible, and to be able to pool funds, because if you can imagine, as we collect the dollars, we're collecting, you know, uh, at most, at least fifty percent discount, so we need to be able to pool the funds together to be able to build a project. So we were trying, the goal was to get larger service areas, but being able to service areas to grow, that's how we ended up there.
Okay, and then you talked about ten years, uh, these projects over ten years, what happens at the end of ten?
Well, um, state law requires you to look at the study every five years. So in five years, we'll look back and see, and actually, every six months, we have to report to the C I C how we spent money. So, and they have to advise us, so like, if we realize, like, hey, our growth projections were too high, or we had too many projects, whatever, we can adjust it every five years, that's really what happens. So there's an adjustment period and see what happens. If the projects are, if you're asking if the projects need to be built within ten years, there's not necessarily a requirement to build on the roadway side, because there's a recognition that you may be collecting potentially a discounted rate from what it needs to be, so there's no requirement to build. On water and wastewater, there's a requirement to provide service, so if you collect an impact fee from someone, you have to provide service. You don't necessarily have to build the project that's on the impact fee C I P, but you have to be able to provide them service. So.
But that five years could be, it, it's, it could be more frequent than.
It could be more frequent.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the, at least every five years.
No, no, no longer.
Any other questions, clarifications?
Mr. Griffith?
Okay. Go over that, Mr. Whitaker, one more time. On water, wastewater, you have a ten-year, uh, you, that you have to supply, but roadway you do not?
Uh, there's no requirement to build roadways because it's, um, there's a requirement on water and wastewater to be able to supply, and I don't remember the years, is it three years, within three years? There's a requirement to, if a, like, a single-family homeless to pay an impact fee, you have to provide them service within a certain amount of time. On roadway side, there's not a requirement to build the specific projects on the list, um, but we have to spend the money within ten years. So if we collect the money.
In that service area?
In that service area. So on roadway, there's a requirement to spend the money within ten years, but we obviously, if, if we look at the projects, we're only collecting half the amount, fifty percent of the amount, there would, it would be impossible to build all those roadways in ten years, so you just have to spend the money within ten years on identified projects.
In that service.
In that service area, correct.
Thank you.
It's a good point.
All right, please continue.
So, this is getting into stuff that you won't see in the presentation tomorrow night, as well as, um, stuff that's not in the report, but we've worked through the calculation. And some of, some of the other slides you saw with the recoverable costs, um, which is the nailed-down numbers in there, so the top line's the recoverable cost. Um, so you take the recoverable cost, and we're working with Blue and his team right now to actually determine the actual finance cost, we've estimated that right now. Um, so some of these numbers are estimated, we add some financing costs, because a portion of those projects we finance. Then we cut that in half, that's that fifty percent I was talking about. So if you look at the, the fourth row on here, the recoverable, total recoverable cost of C I P plus financing and the fifty percent credit, that is the numerator of the equation, so that's what that is, that's the numerator of the equation. If you look at the service units below, that is the demand factor, so for, for water, that's twenty-six, I mean, for roadway, that's twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight vehicle miles. It matches that chart you see before, and for roadway, that's been equivalent to a number of, um, living unit equivalents of the, of the one-inch meter. So that's how many we anticipate over the next, um, ten years. So then at that point, it becomes kind of a, a mathematical exercise, total recoverable cost divided by service units to give you the maximum accessible fee. Um, it comes up to eight hundred and seventy dollars per vehicle mile, and then five hundred and sixty-two dollars per one-inch meter for wastewater. Obviously, you don't pull a one, a one-inch meter for wastewater, but it, it's the same as when you pull the water meter. And then five hundred and seventy-six dollars for a one-inch water meter. We a lot of times get asked, what does that equate to a single-family home? And there's an equivalency factor that we've been working through, that's not in the report tomorrow night, um, but it's two point nine seven. That's the equivalency factor for a single-family home for roadway, so you take the eight hundred and seventy-eight, multiply by two point nine seven, so it'd be twenty-six oh eight for, for a single-family for roadway. And water and wastewater, the one-inch meter is the base meter, so it is the same number, so it's the same number, so water and wastewater's a little easier. We gotta ask the question one time, what's that for a thirty-year mortgage? So I just ran this into a calculator, just to see what it was, and that's the number it came out, just because that's a common question that gets asked after we show, what would this equate to a home buyer? Um, that, that's just taking the twenty-six oh eight and simply.
So about fifty cents a day? A little more, fifty-five cents a day?
Total.
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 So, if you did that for four days, five days, six days, you could buy a cup of, of, a nice cup of coffee at Starbucks, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure I got that.
About twelve bucks a month. Uh, for roadway. Um, to summarize it up, because every service area has a little bit different fee, what I've been showing you was service area A. So that's Northwest Lubbock, that's that twenty-six oh eight, and as you can see, that's, that's kind of the middle ground, there's a few service areas that are a little bit more. If you can think about roadways, you'll see service area H and G are kind of where we're sitting today in the established part of Lubbock, there's not a lot of roadway projects in those areas. And so if you think about your, your toolbox for funding roadways, you've got a, your toolbox for growth funding probably doesn't need to be there for the inner city, because most of that's operations and maintenance. So when you look at service area H and G, that's what this number's showing, is most of your needs in service area H and G are operation maintenance, not necessarily capacity project. Most of your roadways are built here, you're kind of getting to the point where you need to rehab them, rehabilitate them, overlay, you know, some of the maintenance operations. And so the outer areas are, are, are higher, and water and wastewater is the same across the city. But this geographically shows you, um, kind of the needs-based assessment and what it would be. So if you multiply each of those numbers by two point nine seven, or roughly three, just for quick, that gives you a single-family home in each of those areas, so. Um, just to give some comparisons here, and I'm continuously using service area A. This is the very similar comparison chart, if you recall, this number was slightly higher when you saw, um, in February, because we had ex- right-of-way and roadway, and we had existing projects for water and wastewater, and we defined existing projects a little bit, projects that are in usage right now. We had those projects in there. So right now, for service area A, the total impact fee estimated is thirty-seven forty-six. And we, there was no rhyme or reason behind these cities were picked, what I, the cities I picked were, I tried to get cities that had a college there, that's why Denton is there, that's why College Station's there. And then I tried to get some cities from central Texas and from D F W, I tried to get a, a wide variety of cities, obviously put Midland in there because that's one of the closest cities to here that you have. But obviously, if you have any suggestions on comparison cities, I'd be happy to add those to this, this table as well, but this kind of gives you just a feel of the single-family home of where you're lining out. One important thing to note on these, these are the adopter rates of the cities, these aren't the maximum rates. Your, your rates that are shown right here is the maximum that you could access, all the rest of these are what the cities are actually charging. So some of these cities have discounts applied, like, if you look at, the one example I like to use is College Station, it comes out to exactly five thousand dollars. There's no way a mathematical equation comes out to exactly five thousand dollars. The city, that, that advisory committee and that council decided, we are gonna, we are going to assess five thousand dollars for impact fees. And it just so happens, they assessed three thousand for wastewater, fifteen hundred for roadway, and five hundred for water, that was their policy decision on how they assessed those. But the decision that they made was five thousand dollars for a house.
Mr. Griffith's got a question.
On the College Station part, that may just have come from the math department down there.
Something they can understand, right?
Obviously, I jest. Uh, uh, I think you probably have taken this into consideration, but, Mr. Whitaker, to make sure on the roadways, all text dot controlled roadways are, are not included in this, correct?
So, s- text dots controlled roadways have been included, they've been included at the city's cost participation rate. So when the text dot roadway gets built, the city typically participates, and right now, we have the assumption of twenty percent, which is pretty common. So text dot roadways have been included currently, um, at twenty percent cost.
At twenty percent?
Which typically represents what the city's paying text dot to build the roadways.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, you may have mentioned, I, I know you talked about college towns and the like, but why do you have Midland with twice and New Braunfels twice?
Sure, absolutely.
What's the, I don't see the, what the asterix, I don't see the legend for the asterix.
So, some cities do what's called a flat charge across the city, so if you take Fort Worth, for example, it's on here, they made the decision on roadway to charge thirty-seven fifty a house, and they basically made it work, not, not every service area is thirty-seven fifty, but most of them are, they have seventeen. So I put one number, while, uh, Midland has a, has a different fee for each, they have four areas, they have a different fee in each area, so I put the lowest and highest on here.
Gotcha.
And same thing with New Braunfels, that's the lowest, and that's their highest.
So, we talked about service areas a minute ago, and you, you talked about, you looked, I think, at seven, eight, or, seven, eight, or nine, and the C I C has landed in the middle, is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
So, make the point again, you, you sort of, I think you danced around it a bit, but make the point again as to why we wouldn't do twelve as an example.
Yeah, the, the idea is, I'll give you a little history about state law, because at one time, state law said, instead of six, it used to be three, and the service areas get really small. So it gets really hard to actually collectively over ten years, pool enough money together sometimes to build a really significant project. So, at some point after nineteen eighty-seven, I think it was in two thousand two, state law was amended to allow it to be six, to be bigger. And so the objective is, is that you're still wanting to spend money in that service area, so it's directly benefiting the project within that area. However, it allows the city more flexibility to spend the money, so the idea behind the C I C was to get the service areas as large as possible so they had the flexibility to spend the money on those projects, but also thinking about growth. Like, making sure that, you know, in south, in, in Southwest Lubbock, that they could, if they annex, they can incorporate into the service area as well. So it's a kind of a balance between growth of the service areas versus flexibility.
And I, and I think another point on that too is, as you get small service areas, you've got fewer homes, new development to divide in the denominator. So your numerator, you've still got large capital projects there, so your rates could actually go up because you've got fewer people offsetting that. And so, again, you want the area large enough to be meaningful. If it's so small, we can't collect enough money to build anything, and so what's the point, at, at that point? That if you're, if you get your area, it's so small and so granular, um, the revenue that you're gonna generate from that is not gonna be enough to build. So you think of a square mile, you've got four miles of arterials around that, which is forty million dollars. I mean, that's kind of a rule of thumb, is ten million per mile, uh, for a full-built-out arterial. And so now you've just got that one square mile, and just the growth within that, paying for that forty million dollars instead of spreading that out further into the six-mile limit that's allowed by state law. I don't know if that helps. You start moving the numbers, and if you move both of the numbers down, the end result winds up being roughly the same. You reduce the capital cost, you reduce the number of people, it winds up being the same, on the right side of the equal sign, the same number. As both numbers go down, the net result winds up being the same. If you, if you just move one or the other, then you, you change other things. I don't know if I just totally confused you on that.
No, I, I follow, I follow.
So around two thousand and five, we had a lot of cities, like McKinney, for example, which is on here, had twenty, had, they had a lot of service areas, because they, they were, used to be quite smaller, now they have half the amount they had before. And sometimes it became a financing accounting too, because the small, you know, you have to actually track, we have to create individual fund accounts for each of these, so sometimes the financing side, you have to make sure you can account for the money too. Um, Mesquite was one that had twelve, they went down to three, and they said that was the best thing, because when they had twelve, they were having a hard time getting money pooled together, so they went from twelve to three, they had really small service areas to be in with. And they said the best thing for their program is when they went to the bigger service areas, so that was just some anecdotal feedback from other cities I've worked in.
Do you think eight's too many for us?
No, I think eight, eight is the, probably the right amount, I mean, that you can't really get, seven pushes the limit of what state law allows, so you have to have, seven would be the minimal. I think eight allows you to have the growth, so we're trying to balance, really, seven, eight, or nine was kind of where we landed on, and we thought eight was, I, I felt really comfortable when the C I C's recommendation for eight, I think it's the right amount.
Ms. Joy?
Just looking at your presentation, you're showing either July or August for the council to act.
Are you skipping ahead, Ms. Joy?
Yeah, and there's a reason for it, because it, I mean, we're getting closer. But since you started this, this process, and now, there are a lot of projects that have occurred and finished. Are those projects included in future as opposed to what's already been done? In other words, we, we've been working at this, what?
About a year.
About a year?
Not, not quite a year, we're getting close. Um, for the roadway side, the decision was to keep the existing projects in, so that hasn't changed, so like, whether it occurred or not, it would still be in there, and we've kept, I think the existing projects on roadway side are pretty up to date. I think for water and wastewater, we touched on that a little bit, some of those windows are gonna move, but, um, I don't know if any projects have actually been completed that we originally had proposed. I don't think so, I think the list still on there is accurate, because we just, that, if you remember, the existing projects were removed in February timeframe-ish, I think February thirteenth is when we started removing those, so we went through that list on the water and wastewater side to remove in February.
Yeah, and, and the question's simply, can we rely on, on these numbers, that, that's the real question?
I, we feel confident in the numbers.
Okay.
Please continue.
Um, so just a reminder, there's, the study calculates the maximum fee, which you just saw before you. The actual rate is really a decision of this, of, you know, s- um, the C, C I C's working incredibly hard to come up with some of the tough questions to provide a recommendation potentially to you guys to consider, but really, my job is kind of the easy part, I crunch the numbers and I show it to you. Your job is the hard part of actually figuring out, well, that's the max that you can charge, so like, I'm, I'm giving you the ceiling, so that number you just saw, that's the ceiling. So, after the May twenty-eighth meeting, if it, if it, if we move forward, council will have to consider the following policy actions. Rate setting, um, and what percent of the fee should be calculated? So, right now, we're showing you, if you will, the maximum, you can adopt anything from zero to a hundred percent, is what we're showing you, what we showed you. Should the fee be the same in all roadway service areas? That's the question to the mayor's question, why did different cities show different things, some cities decide to make the fee the same, some don't. I think in, in Lubbock, if you decide to have, you know, if you look at the central city, there's obviously, that's really low, so you may have different fees in different areas, or you may choose something differently. Um, because the outer, outside the loop is a little bit different than kind of inside the loop. Um, should there be different fees for residential and non-residential? A lot of cities, that's kind of one of their decision points is, should we provide a different percentage of the maximum fee for residential? Should we provide a different city for the fee for non-residential? And I can tell you, I've worked in a lot of cities, and every city has different goals, some do it for non-residential, they do a bigger reduction for non-residential. Some cities do a bigger reduction for residential, it, it, it really depends on where the city is and the growth patterns of the city. The other one is, when's the effective date, when do the impact fees go into effect? Some cities choose to make it effective immediately, state law requires a year grace period if you have already platted. Um, some cities give a longer grace period, some cities, the effective date is a decision they have to make, when do these go into effect? And then, are there any other discounts that you want to apply or reductions? You know, the three that I said in the rate setting are the common ones most cities consider. You know, what percentage should we charge, should it be the same in all the roadway service areas, and residential, non-residential? But there are, there's a lot of other policy elements that could go into the impact fee ordinance for you to consider, and those are, those are city-specific and goal-specific. Limited use in most cities, a lot of cities don't have those other ones, so I don't feel like you have to have other reductions, but it's something to consider, you could. Like, in Fort Worth, for example, if you're inside the loop in Fort Worth, they decided not to charge an impact fee, they charged an impact fee outside the loop, that was one of their decisions that they did, that was one of.
So that's like incentives for, for downtown redevelopment or infill development, some, something along those lines?
Yeah, and, and we're, we're actually been tasked by the advisory committee on, actually Friday, to present to them what other cities have used for options. So we're gonna be presenting them some, just going through ordinances of other cities and what some other cities have been doing, so they can kind of get a feel for that. Remember, the May twenty-eighth is the public hearing, there's a lot of options that council could choose for, they can, you can approve the study as written, you can approve it with comments. So, for example, if you wanted to change something on it, you could say, we approve this, but could you reconsider this, could you do that? You can make minor, you can ask us to address minor modifications and bring it back to the second public hearing, or you can ask us to make modifications and have, continue the public hearing on the same topic. So, there's a lot of options that you can do tomorrow night, that you can, and we can walk you through that tomorrow night, um, and legal staff can help us walk you through that. And we want to make sure you're comfortable with the assumptions as we move forward, that's the goal of, of the meetings. You're not approving a rate, the final report would not be adopted, so the report that we're showing you is really the first several chapters of the final report. We'll finalize, and you can, when you read the executive summary of the final report, you'll see that references parts that will be in the ultimate final report that are not there yet. But you're not, the final report's not adopted until the final ordinance, so tomorrow's kind of a check-in point. So this is the calendar that I think you've seen presented to you before, this was our current schedule. Obviously, one of the reasons I put this schedule up here is just so you see kind of what we're working towards, the North Star. Um, the schedule can change tomorrow, obviously, if something changes tomorrow, the schedule can move back. We could keep on the schedule, but this has kind of been the schedule that we put together a few months ago. Um, I think we put this together around the March or February timeframe, um, and kind of have been working towards the schedule at this time, but obviously, the schedule's at the desire of the council of how we want to go, but we're right here in May. But obviously, the schedule's at the desire of the council of how we want to go. But we're right here in May. And we're moving forward. As you can see, we've had kind of four meetings with the C I C. They got comfortable, because we have to put the report online 30 days in advance for the public to look at. So when we put, when they got comfortable and put the report online and moved to adopt the report, they wanted to move forward and start having some of the harder discussions, because they felt like those discussions would take longer to get to a recommendation. So we went ahead and started those discussions on some of the policy and technical elements over the last few months. And I'm proud to say that we've gotten pretty good attendance on those meetings. We've been having them online. So I think that we've gotten, you know, 25 or 30 people that have been attending those meetings and hearing the information we've been giving out. So with that, that was the presentation for today. Um, of course, any other questions, we're happy to entertain.
Okay, council, questions for, for Mr. Whitaker or our staff? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you. Was, has there been discussion on ever doing the calculations by front footage of lots?
Um, at one point in time, there was a discussion of other ways to do transportation funding, and I think Blue kind of walked through different things. But there hasn't been a focus of the committee or anyone to look in that. It was more of like, what are other options out there? And we had one meeting on other options.
Other cities do that?
Um, not very many cities do that. They've kind of gone away from it, because, um, the reason is, is because the developer pays for front footage. You have to actually use that money on that front footage, so there's not the flexibility in it. So the reason they've gone away is because, and you have to refund that money in a certain amount of time. So the city, if they collect the money and they don't, can't build the roadway in time, they sometimes have to refund the money. So it gets, it becomes a much more accounting issue. Um, a lot of times, what I recommend, if you were to move forward with impact fees, is if, if a developer does, wants his, if he's building a large development, wants his frontage to be built, he has the option to build the frontage in front of him and receive offsets towards it. He wouldn't have to pay his impact fee. He could build a frontage in front of him and not pay the impact fee if it offsets the right dollar amount. So most cities have moved away with a frontage, um, city, just mainly because the accounting's, it, it becomes a pretty hard accounting exercise.
Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Weaver, anything from you guys? Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Atkinson, anything from you? Mr. Keenum?
Just, just to clarify for, for what you have to do tomorrow night. You don't have to take any action tomorrow night. Uh, we do have a resolution that would approve the land use assumption and the capacity plans as written. Like Jeff said, you can modify that. State law requires you to take action within 30 days, approve or disapprove or modify. And so, um, there is a resolution that will be before you tomorrow night after the public hearing. But you could delay the action on that. But state law requires something has to be done within 30 days after the public hearing. So just wanted to make sure that this body was aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Keenum. And by the way, council, just so you, for your planning purposes, the, the second, within that, within the 30 days, that second public hearing is, is, will coincide with our second council meeting in June, so on the 23rd. Ms. Joy?
Just, um, real quickly, um, my question just went out the window. So if I think of it, I'll ask Mike.
And just to clarify that, Mayor, on the 23rd, that would be setting the public hearing?
That's setting, so that's, I thought we had to have a second hearing within 30?
We, we have to adopt the, uh, the land use and capacity plans within 30 days.
Okay, so if we adopted it tomorrow night, then we, then we potentially could do it on the 23rd?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I have a concern. I mean, just, the, the calendar to me is, uh, the July 28th, August 11th is problematic because of budget. I mean, I, you know, either, either we need to get it done, or we need to wait till, you know, after October, or, you know, after mid, you know, after our first meeting in September, I guess. Because I, I think, uh, I know how much time we spend on budget, and I would, I think, feel like it would be, um, it would probably not be the, um, best use of our time, or, or, so we can, we can talk a bit about that. But that, those are, those are my, just my thoughts regarding that.
Yeah, we, we could definitely move the schedule back. We can't move it up any because of the state law requirements of advertisement and everything, but we could definitely look at different dates moving it back.
Oh, oh, all right. Ms. Joy?
Are there any cities who do not?
I was trying to kill time for you, so, yeah, yeah.
Cities who do not include water and wastewater?
Yeah, there, there are cities that have a, water and wastewater is more common than roadway. More cities have water and wastewater than roadway. Um, but there are cities that just have roadway. There are cities that just have water. There are cities that just have wastewater. Um, you don't have to have, you can have one, two, or all three. There are a handful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Uh, staff, citizens, thank you for being here. This, uh, it's, uh, 10:57, and special meeting of the Lubbock City Council is adjourned.